Morning, everybody. Call meeting in order. We do have a forum. Taking motion to approve the agenda in the minutes. Is there second? Right. All favor I? I pose. Okay, we on agenda. Rich Brown, good morning.
Good morning. For you this morning is the twenty eighty agreement between Suragordo County and Worth County. Did I give you a copy of that? It's a pretty standard twenty eighty agreement. Says who's responsible for. It just kind of highlights who's responsible for what sections of the county line. For maintenance. I don't, it hasn't changed anything in the last. All it does is clarify what we're taking care of. It's kind of an update. I don't think either one of us have one on file. There's someone. There's a, there's one somewhere, but it just says that. Worth County is responsible for certain miles. Suragordo County is responsible for certain miles. And it puts a dollar amount like individual projects that happen on the county line are going to be divided fifty fifty. We're talking construction projects. The twenty eighty agreement doesn't cover who covers what. So when there's a project in the county line like we have down south of Manly. We have a separate twenty eight agreement to explain who pays for what. So we all have estimates, things like that. Each county takes care of routine maintenance within their. Their miles that they're allowed to, or are told to have. Major maintenance is something else we look at for splitting fifty fifty. And there's dollar amounts. Anything in major maintenance that's over fifty five hundred dollars a mile. We look at split fifty fifty and then anything where there's bridge repairs, cobert repairs, or costs exceed ten thousand dollars, we split fifty fifty. And that's between the county engineers to discuss when, when stuff like that comes up. So we can program some things if there's projects. Driveways are a little bit. Different maybe gives us more clarity that if the driveway is regardless of who's maintaining that mile. If the driveway is on Suragordo side, they maintain, they manage the driveway installation. If it's on Worth County side, Worth County does. So. They go by their policies there. Maintenance practices are utilized. Whoever, you know, our maintenance practices will be on the miles that we have of Suragordo County. Does something different on their miles. They do something different. That's fine. So not everybody practices or is going to be the same, but it just, it all it does is clarify who's, who's responsible for which miles. And then any sort of, the counties can't agree on certain projects, whatever. There's a clause in there for. Litigation of, you know, responsibility. So. Then there's a map on the back and it shows who's responsible for which miles. So. I can't read the map very well. So it's the northeast corner. Of Suragordo County. They've got the first three miles. The northeast corner and then the. I'm sorry, the northwest corner. And then the northeast seven miles. There's a description in the, in the agreement, but we just want to get this on file with the state.
Did that change?
I don't think so.
I think it did.
Unless they've got the. It shouldn't have. And just, I guess to boot, all the, all the miles. Or all the bridges on the, on this, on the county line will be Suragordo's main thing.
Oh, no, that is Suragordo's, not ours.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Like I said, if we're inspecting bridges now on the county line, they'll take over those responsibilities and we'll. Give them, we'll keep our files too, but we'll give them copies.
Nothing, just a standard.
Yeah, just kind of clarify some things that we've never had in file and we get it filed with the state so that it's a legal document.
Sounds good.
Never been a problem, but it just needs to be done.
Better have it on paper and.
Yeah.
Beforehand.
We'll probably have to look at. Our neighboring county and see if we can update those too, just so we got some newer stuff. So Jackie's got the original file there that's got the colored map on the back. So we can. Get that signed and sent to the Suragordo County to approve. I'm gonna recommend you go ahead and take care of this.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the twenty eighty agreement with Suragordo County?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll second it.
Any other special? None. Um, so roll call. Lowberg, maybe Stone, I. Motion will pass. Rich, what else you got?
Some project updates. Right now. ECI is moving in on three fiftieth street on the, on the bridge down there. We get some surveys done for him this morning, but I think they're going to be tearing stuff out today. The locals know about that location and then okay, the biggest thing is one oh five where we add. The plant pieces are moved in. They're going to try to build the plant this week. It sounds like possibly bringing the paver in. Wednesday, Thursday. Depending which day they move it in, it could be paving Thursday, Friday. If they do, they might even pave Saturday, but we don't know for sure yet exactly the day. They're still.
Thursday, Friday of this week.
This week, yeah.
Okay.
Possibly mud on the ground by Thursday, maybe more likely Friday, but who knows? I mean, they're. They're, they're, they've been hit with COVID. They're down truck drivers. They're down plant people and everything else. So they're trying to make things work. So. But they do have the plant, the pant, plant pad poured. So they can get that erected and get going. Still got a whole lot of material in to start paving. So.
So will they or you kind of keep track of progress for some of the landowners?
Yep, yep, we're gonna, once the stuff shows up. You'll know the progress of, of the equipment, but I know that Russ and Al have been out trying to locate or talk to a few of the. Landowners that have big farm sites on, on the road to keep them up to date so they can plan a little bit better and.
It was on weather and how the progress goes every day.
The nice thing about the project is if we do get rain. It might slow the, the farmers down, but the paving can keep moving. So.
Okay.
But we're looking at possibly. Up to a mile a day in paving. We don't know that for sure because we don't know how to plant. You know, we gotta, they gotta get, and then as far as the maturity goes, until we get a maturity curve developed by. The mix and cool temperatures, we'll know for sure what the opening is. But once we. Put some fillets down in driveways, that's when the landowners know they can get back in. And if we do, we, we'll try to get the. But like even for your farm site, they will try to get the driveways big enough to get traffic in and out. When we get it open. So. Try to minimize the inconvenience as much as possible. The nice thing is, road's got wide shoulders. So we can. You know, the standard size vehicle can probably maneuver. To the nearest intersection, but we'll try to keep it. Usually the contractor is pretty good at knocking on doors and saying, hey, tomorrow we're going to be here. Here's what you need to do. So.
Okay.
It's usually worked out well, but anybody can call us if they want. Updates. So.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's all I've got for you this morning.
About three ninety.
Three ninety.
The bridge on three ninety.
Oh, sorry.
Have they poured it all down there?
Uh, yeah, the deck was poured, deck was poured last week, I think. Right now, I guess I didn't talk to Al, but. They're supposedly trying to form the railing yet. And once I get the railing formed, they'll pour that and then. They've got a bottom at work and backfilling and paving to do that. So.
I drove down there and saw that. Yesterday, so everyone was poured, where the deck was all poured and they were still forming them.
Yes, two hours before that there. So that's, that's the biggest thing right now. They've got to form up that. That'd be last kind of thing other than the vapor tubes.
Sounds good. Anything else for Rich? Yeah, thanks, sir.
All right, thank you.
Drainage, are there any claims? I didn't see any come through for drainage.
Oh.
Petition for repairs on DD seventy two.
This is just a.
It's kind of an informal deal. Is this Mark?
Yeah, I think he just wants it on record.
So this is a ditch that will be taken over. Down there in southwest part of the county and Mark, one of the landowners in the area, wants to make sure that wants to. Do everything he wants to be right on the list to get repairs started on the ditch because it's fifty plus years since that ditch has been.
Which Boltman Lake has already been engaged.
Yeah, so.
It's just.
I just told a file, formal petition. We need to accept that.
Yeah.
Motion to accept petition.
All right, there's a motion to accept petition for DD seventy two repairs. There's a second.
I'll second it.
All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all favor I? I pose. All right. Since they've already been engaged though. That'll be right on the list too, I guess, right?
Or ahead of me.
Yeah.
He wants to rock and roll.
All right. Uh, regular claims.
Questions?
Questions or concerns?
Well, she did accept.
There's motions, there's second. Discussion. I'll say right. I pose. The payroll? Want you to approve the payroll claims. Motion second. Hey, right. I pose. All right, any reports? No reports. Payroll eligibility or salary change. Full time?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. She just couldn't start right away.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So I'm making a motion to.
Prove. Nyla?
Yeah.
Good. Motion to prove Nyla for full time. We're in position with public health. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All favor I? I oppose. All right, motion carry. Uh, the relations.
Lazy acre venue.
What is that?
It's over there.
Yeah.
Been there.
It's up on the. Let me see that. All right, sorry. There's a motion to approve the license for lazy acres. There's a second.
Second it.
All right, discussion. All favor I? I pose. Motion carry. Yeah, new management plan updates. Okay, there's a motion. There's a second. All right. Any special? All favor I? I propose. Okay. Twenty eighty law enforcement agreement between Worth County, city of Northwood and state of Iowa. Sheriff's been working with the city on this and everybody came to an agreement, correct? Okay. And it's, are we signing first? Are they signing first or? Oh, okay. So. Sounds good. Take a motion to. Accept the twenty eighty agreement with the city of Northwood.
I'll make that motion.
All right, is there a second? Any other discussion?
Is that a three year?
Four year. Yep, through, through twenty twenty six. Any else? Roll call. Lowberg, maybe, Stone, I. Okay. Thanks for that, man. Uh, Winworth Becko, Melissa on this morning.
Morning.
Hey.
Uh, I'm just working on the board report and budget for the next board meeting. And then today. We finished those NIACOG surveys. So they'll be. Presenting the, the results from that. And then we should be receiving. Uh, payment from, from NIACOG for doing those surveys. So it'll be some. Unexpected income for the organization.
Good. We enjoy that. Never complain about extra money coming in. Um, how was your conference?
Really good. Yeah.
Good. Um, I'll probably get in touch with you later this week on possible Port Authority meeting. So.
Okay.
Have to chat a little bit on Friday. So I'll let you know.
All right, sounds good.
You from Melissa, good? Good. Thank you, Melissa.
You bet.
All right, Jeff, lowball. There you are.
First, I'd like to speak in response to comments made about Mark Crowell last week during the supervisor's meeting. It was the second time that Mark has impugned my character integrity. The first time I attributed it to desperate attempt to attempt to deflect when Invenergy didn't like hearing the realities. But I can't continue to let those attacks on my character motivations go unchallenged. I should have spoke up last week during the meeting after his comments, but my agenda at the time had passed. And I didn't want to disrupt the supervisor's agenda. At least twice in public comment to the supervisors. Mark has questioned my comments as chair of the zoning commission versus what he perceives as my personal opposition to these projects. It implied that I have a bias against what's best for the county. And that influences my comments when speaking for the commission. He made those comments last week on the basis of my remarks as chair of the commission against the agreement that Invenergy wants. The agreement which he turned as an alternative process and accused me of lack of respect for the process. I believe it's a universal symptom of humans that we're all driven in some part based on our personal beliefs and feelings. That said, I have stated repeatedly, I am not opposed to win projects. I am opposed to projects and companies that run over people's rights. Whether you choose to believe that or not is your right. I also value my character and integrity very much. And I've continually strived to ensure that my comments and actions as chair of the zoning commission. Are exercised based on the rights and concerns of the county at large. And that what I say while speaking for the commission is a fair and accurate representation of the commission at large. I make very clear when I speak as an individual and when I speak as a chair of the commission. And I am speaking personally today. I categorically deny that I have injected my personal beliefs into my comments as chair of the zoning commission. In an attempt to deceitfully represent the position in the commission. To be clear, my comments to the supervisors as chair of the commission. Are always consistent with the stated positions of the commission votes. And representative of the commission, of the positions of the commission at large. In fact, I represent those, those positions, even if my personal position is different. And I did at various times have different opinion than the other commissioners. We all did during discussion and debate. And I voiced genuine disappointment at Invenergy's decision not to engage in conversation and feedback. During the review phase of the proposed ordinance. I told Mark personally that I explicitly wanted their feedback on some of the points in the draft. At the end, however, the results of the commission work on the ordinance represent what the commissioner's unanimous vote was for all that is included. And I strive to represent that outcome in my comments when I speak on behalf of the commission. We've heard from Invenergy about the overwhelming support they have versus the quote, no organized opposition to the project, I quote, that Mark described in August. They view that argument as a reason to proceed with their alternative agreement. Without regard to the fact that supporters of the draft ordinance vastly outnumbered those in opposition to it. An analysis of the coordinates Invenergy provided in the agreement and county tax records. Revealed that of the fifty turbines they plant in the county, there are a grand total of thirty two landowners. Twelve of which live in town or out of state. Of the thirty two total, only seven live within a mile of a planned turbine location. And only four of those are within less than two thousand feet. I'll reiterate, it was the unanimous decision of the zoning commission. That landowners that want a turbine should be allowed to make their choice and sell their easements. But so too should the overwhelmingly larger number of landowners that will actually be impacted by the turbine. Be allowed to have a voice and a choice via the proposed ordinance and not run over by the Invenergy agreement. As to Mark's statement that my comments regarding the inability to develop sound patterns without identification of the originating equipment is a false statement on behalf, on my behalf. I'm dumbfounded. To put it differently, I'm saying that it is not possible for anyone to state unequivocally that an unknown piece of machinery. Installed in an unidentified location will generate a detailed and specific sound contour. That can be shown on a map to prove that someone will not be subjected to a sound above a certain level. By definition, the causes are unknown, so accurate depiction of the results cannot be known. Mark, on the other hand, says that it is possible and that my statement that it is not possible is false. Please explain how, how an unequivocal sound contour can be plotted on a map under the circumstances I described. I believe logic dictates that my statements are not false. I also don't believe that the sound pattern analysis takes into account the amplification of sound from clustered turbines. When worthwhile wind turbines are located within a few hundred feet of existing prior turbines. The analysis from August seems only to represent the sound from worthwhile wind turbines. It does not show the other existing turbines they would be next to and the amplified effects on sound. And when you plot the new term, the new locations with existing, you can see that there will be new or increased clusters. As I pointed out last week, even Mark Crowell has stated, sound of turbines in proximity are louder. That is not evident on their map. As for Mark's statement that I don't have respect for the process, he's got it backwards. I have complete respect for the process and my comments personally and have chair and as chair have consistently argued for adherence to the process. The process, by the way, is for county rule as articulated in state code. It gives county supervisors legislative rights to pass ordinances. And county supervisors' resolutions under their statutory right under state code. That asks their appointed zoning commission to make recommendations on land use ordinances so that the supervisors can consider and vote on it. That is the legal process under state code. And I've adamantly argued personally and on behalf of the zoning commission to follow that process. Not some alternative process that Invenergy invents to get their way. In fact, the process Invenergy is advocating consists not just of an agreement to bypass the process I outlined in the moment bill. Their process and desired, desired agreement includes language to lock supervisors into bypassing even existing county zoning laws. Regardless of any assurance from their attorney to the contrary, a common English reading of the agreement shows the agreement would in fact. Render even current zoning process subordinate to the agreement. We also see that they're depicting turbines on land that they know not to be under easement rights. Some of which they claim may sign, but others simply on the map outside of even potential easement locations. Turban forty eight is a clear example of this. Are those there so that later they can claim that they have to move them as they did in Deer Creek? And we know that at least six of their planned locations under the agreement are outside boundaries of what state and federal agencies have reviewed. Extending the project board to encompass those would be a violation of those required reviews. Since it effectively adds turbines and locations that were not reviewed by those agencies. Those should simply not be allowed unless the new project boundaries were to be resubmitted for those agencies reviews. Extending the boundaries to me would seem to be just as illegal and inappropriate as bypassing process laid out to the public by the supervisors. While I'm on the subject of their maps, it's curious that their map of residences are missing residences. For example, along a single road, a couple of miles in length that I looked at between some planned turbine sites was missing at least seven residences that exist. How many more are missing across the entire map? The plan and alternative agreement are simply not appropriate. So to be clear, my position as an individual. And when I represent the zoning commission is to follow the prescribed process. It is Invenergy that, that disrespects it and is arguing to bypass the prescribed process. I urge the supervisors to respect the process and follow the direction of the resolution that was passed in April. I believe you're obligated to do so. Any agreement with Invenergy, including road and drainage agreement, should come only after duly prescribed permitting process, not before. Especially one that effectively bypasses the statutory process. And thank you. I welcome any questions and I'll stand by for your agenda item when you discuss the ordinance.
Questions for Jeff? Yes. Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it. Oh, Elliot Evans.
Great.
How you doing?
Good. Yeah, my name's Elliot Evans. I live in the Ole Miss Bristol Township where all those windmills are at and put up like twenty one years ago. And I Googled this, seventy three percent of Americas, of people who live Americas cause stress caused by financial stress. And I live there. I guess I get royalties off some of those windmills. And when my wife lost her job, like six hundred other people did, at Fleet Yard, we had health insurance. Right now, we not have health insurance. I gotta buy it on my own. For me and my wife, our two kids, it's cost me twenty four thousand dollars a year. And those royalties off those windmills helps offset that. So to me, it's a life changing event having those windows on my property to get that income. And. Just like my grandpas, both my grandpas raised on a farm. Every farm had a windmill. And those windmills were a life changing event for them, just like it is for me. Just like for every citizen. In Bristol Township that has those windmills. And this is Bergen, every elderly person was a widow, live on social security. That extra income is a lifesaving event for all those people. And in this ordinance, they said, we cannot put up new windmills. And then it's like driving a nineteen sixty car. You can't update your car. And all, the foundations there, all the wires. And a few years ago, they had. They wanted to do a five year agreement with them. And every person in that development did a five years extension. That's how much everybody there loves those windmills. And if you don't have a windmill, Lee Holberson, who was a farmer, moved all of the snow for top buyer wind farm. And had extra income from him. Ask him, it's a lifesaving event. And it's like Nick DeBore, the young farmer bought a farm with a windmill. And for him, that extra income really helps offset his payment. So there's a lot of benefits. To those windmills for the royalty and it helps. You know, everybody there. You could go ask everybody and everybody would say the same thing I'm telling you. So there's always two sides of a story. And to me, the pros outweigh the cons. Just like you raise my taxes and grab my income, it's going to be left out for the naked. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh. I, I agree with you. Hundred percent. There's pros, there's cons, there's financial weather. One thing I like about that wind farm over there. And Mark said, when I came in, all the landowners got together, all the landowners worked on it together. All the landowners made it right with the other landowners. It was a well drawn out, well planned, well executed wind farm. Everybody liked it. You go east. You go Kentset, you go to Barton Township, same situation. Everybody worked together on it. Everybody put them in places that was proper. Everybody took advantage of the benefit. We lost a little bit of that in Deer Creek. We don't want to see that happen again. I have no problem. You put wind turbines on your property. Never have. But I want to see it done, planned out properly. To get along with your neighbors, just like the rest of these had been done. That is fair to me. So I, I do agree with you. Hundred percent. And that's. A statement I've been telling people that I don't want to take them away from you. But we need to work together, plan it out, make sure it works for everybody. You agree with me on that? Okay, thank you. Any questions for?
No, I have, I have the same opinion. If you want to replace your windmills down in Bristol, when they become. No longer. When they get outdated, I firmly want you to be able to go and put them up again.
Is anyone at ordinance? They don't want us to.
They don't what?
They don't want us to do that.
That'll change the whole picture. The way the ordinance is written, it'll change the whole picture of that.
He said we could change the computer, but he didn't want us to put up a new structure.
Yeah, you can put up a new structure and that would. You know, there's a, the ability to have variance is all that and ordinance, but you know, that's all dependent on sitting on the board or sitting on the zoning board, whether they would allow those variances or not. And when people sign those contracts originally, there was always that chance that they could be improved or. You know, and right now, the way that ordinance is. Completely change. I mean, that's something I. I mean, that's something I'd like to see changed in the ordinance that we're going to go forward. That needs to change. You know, yes, their grandfathered in as they are, but to change these, it's it's it would be really tough. I mean, most of us sit, as landlords sit around four to five of these turbines right around us. And it would probably eliminate at least half of them during that process if we were to build them.
You know, my attitude is, if you want to put up a windmill out there that's another third as high or half the Guinness high. The landowner should have the right to sign a variance and it happens. If he wants it that close to his land, his house, I got no problem with it.
Unfortunately, they sit with them, you know, you know how important it is. There's still acreages every section. Hundred fifty acres of every owner, pretty eighty acreage in some situations. So again, that's gonna affect the amount of the turbines and more likely they would probably be less turbines if they're bigger. It'll create the same manpower, more power, but that's still gonna change that whole picture. And it also changes the financing for the county because that wind farm goes directly into the county budget now. And you know, it'll either be more or less, we wouldn't know, but just like any business can come or go, we don't know that. But you know, this ordinance does affect these older wind farms. And I think that's something in the ordinance that needs to be changed.
More of that discussion. Yeah, anything else for Elliot?
No.
You have any else?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Up next, Mark Crowell, along with Mr. Dubus, we talked about our development agreement.
Yeah, well, I wasn't, this is Brett Dublinsky from Fredericton Fire and Law Firm, and I was gonna leave it to Mark. But I I do want to address some of the things Mr. Borbal said about law and process because I I have some disagreement there. And I've been doing this in a lot of counties for a lot of years. We've done developmental agreements in counties. We've seen how some of these things play out. And when Mr. Borbal talks about respecting the process and following the law, vested rights are part of Iowa law. And it's not somehow rolling over the process to note that Invenergy already had a couple of million dollars invested by the time the new ordinance was proposed. And the law has a way of dealing with that, right? That is also and just as much part of the law as the county's ability to pass ordinances. We've dealt with that very successfully in transitional cases in several other counties by using a development agreement. We aren't trying to trample on anybody's rights. In fact, the development agreement gives the county enforceable rights. That if our theory of vested rights is correct, the county wouldn't have in the currently unzoned areas. So we're not trying to roll over anybody's rights. We're actually trying to reach an agreement that doesn't waste all the effort we've already put in planning, but still gives the county enforceable rights. And that we can agree on somewhere in the middle. And we've tried very hard and there's been frankly, a lot of process with county, as I hope you all recognize. Over the last five, six months now, we have tried to respond and I've been the one that's got to be the scribbler for a lot of the the language on this. You know, the county has has had concerns about the Deer Creek project and some of the things that didn't go as well as it as the county liked and some ways to try and prevent that. As recently as last week, we agreed to provide some funding for inspection to ensure compliance with the agreement that we're entering. So we have tried to work with the county. There's been months of process on that to fill this gap. And I understand, obviously, you've got a lawyer and Will can advise you. I don't mean to step on his toes on this. But, you know, we may disagree on the contours of vested rights, but I think everyone agrees and understands that concept is out there. And the development agreement just resolves that dispute upfront and it gives you currently protections that are as good as or better than for the average county, right? The Iowa Environmental Council did a survey of Iowa counties a couple, two, three years ago now. The most common terms for setbacks were twelve fifty and fifteen hundred. And then there are still obviously unzoned counties. The average setback distance is still well below fifteen hundred in Iowa. So these are meaningful protections that we're giving the county and it puts any disputes to rest. This, again, this is part of what the law contemplates is that certainly you have the right to adopt a tougher ordinance. But you also have to balance that with the right of the fact that the wind farm has been under planning and under development for a long time. And it would waste a lot of that those resources to simply change at this stage of the game to adopt to an ordinance that we had no way of knowing about at the time that that planning took place. There's a a path that we've been working on that we think is a good outcome for everybody. We think it addresses some of the concerns you've raised about Deer Creek. We think it avoids future disputes. We think it helps expedite bringing benefits into the county. I don't mean to steal all of all of Mark's comments here, but it it's just important that this is not some extra legal processes, I mean, outside of legal process, something wrong. This is something that many counties have done to try and bridge this gap around the vested rights problem. And again, I would know when we talk about statutory rights, Iowa statute is very, very clear. Wind energy is a favored public policy in Iowa. It's been supported by Republicans, been supported by Democrats, by the governor, by the legislature. Right there in the code, right? So as we think about what the law says and what the proper process is, it's also important to to ask. Are we applying that in a way that is true to the statute that is not only not interfering with additional wind development? But is facilitating it like the state legislature, you know, the state public policy has set forth? So again, I wasn't planning on speaking, but I think it's very important to note. What we're doing here is not somehow outside of the process. What we're doing here is consistent with state law, is trying to work with you to try and bridge and a a situation that state law doesn't cover very well. And try and avoid a dispute over what that gap in state law really means in a way that helps both of us get to a point where there is no legal fighting going forward and we all come out ahead on the deal. So with that, let me just turn it over to Mark.
Thanks, Brett. And I think that's that's all very important information here and just want to kind of build off that a little bit. You know, I'll touch briefly again, like on previous weeks, like I have on just comments with Jeff. It's not meant to 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 talk about Jeff as an individual, not at all. That was never the intent. It's more about, you know, when I'm looking at this, just I've got an old school personality, right? I mean, I I want to look whenever I'm speaking to have most of my points cover the strengths of the development agreement. Because I'm confident in that. It was more of a comment to the fact that, you know, using that time for the ordinance to then speak against the development agreement, which is in a unique perspective. It's just a little bit different than, you know, than than my approach that I typically look at. But, you know, I will, I I certainly did not mean for that to be the intent. And and want to remove the fact or or the idea that I'd be questioning Jeff's character. So just the fact that there, you know, seemed to be some some differences between his personal opinion and that position as the chair. That I commented on, but to continue to build off of that and 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 again, kind of one thing that that Jeff had mentioned. You know, you you can't just say, okay, there there's a couple, these are the turbine locations. And so these are the only owners in in the project area that support it. I mean, you you can't kind of strip away all the additional support that we have in the county. We have two hundred participating landowners in this project area with the majority of those ninety percent of those being located in Iowa, majority of those again, located in Worth County. And a lot of those folks are in the room today, you know, here to be able to come in and show that support. But just the fact that we have those landowners that have signed shows a level of, you know, of trust and support for these projects and when that goes above and beyond just kind of commenting or, you know, voicing forcing their opinion in support and against it, you know, they were willing to 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 trust us in this process. And and sign on to really see this thing go through. So I'm really here today talking on behalf of those people to make sure that the ones that couldn't make it here. You know, know that, you know, our project is continuing to move forward to bring all of those benefits to the community, to those folks like Elliot had had mentioned, all of the good things that this project can bring. To the the supporters, to the county overall. A couple of months ago, I did show a presentation that kind of went in depth about all the detail of everything, you know, that we've done on the project. But it really boils down to a couple of slides. I mentioned this to you, AJ, last week, just about, you know, there was one that was put in there that showed, hey, these are some of the things that that happened at Deer Creek and these are how they're solved in the development agreement. And that's really what this process has been. It's been a series of communications, continue to understand more and more what those issues are. What protections you want to be able to see. And then make sure that a development agreement that we negotiated has those protections in there and they do. So those issues that were popped up on these other projects or Deer Creek specifically has a way of being addressed so that it doesn't happen again here on worthwhile. And Agent, to a comment that you made earlier, I think we we absolutely share, right, the same goal. We want the project for worthwhile win to be looked at, like Top of Iowa and Barton, those that have, you know, a big supportive group. And we have that worthwhile as well. We do have a large contingent of folks in our project footprint that want to see this go through. And we're trying to make sure we establish kind of the playing field and those standards. So the worthwhile is that process. We kind of get the the win in Worth County back on the right track. And so, you know, kind of to just to to close out here and that's been too much time. You know, Brett Brett touched on this, but you know, it is a unique situation that does require, you know, a a unique solution here. You know, and this is a decision that they can bring really a lot, a a a lot of those benefits here to the folks in and around. Bring, you know, tax dollars, bring all all of the good things that that can can hold into the county as well. But we requested to vote today, you know, to 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 bring some supporters here to be able to show. You know, talk about all of the good things like Brett said that this can provide. It adds layers of protections in places that there already are some in process and adds protections in areas where there aren't any. And to me personally, you know, I've been working on this project for a couple of years and I've made relationships with a a bunch of folks in the county. I've enjoyed speaking with with you three over the past couple of months, you know. But, you know, what I want and what the project wants is the ability to kind of turn the page and be able to work and continue to build. You know, a community oriented approach and go prove these things and go enact these things and just have a clear playing field for us to move forward from. So with that, you know, I'll stop talking here. Obviously, I've got, if you if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them and thank you for your time and the process over the past couple of months.
Mr. Monk, no questions for Mark? I guess because of the group of people that are here, I agree with Brett that the environmental council came out with this study. And my problem, and it does say a lot of them in there are anywhere from seven fifty to thousand to twelve hundred fifty. My problem is most of them, as far as I can tell, the latest one is twenty seventeen. We didn't have these big windmills before twenty seventeen in this area. Most of these setbacks are for your older windmills like at Bristol, Top Iowa, one, two, and three. They're not nearest tall. And everybody knows normally as you go higher, you go back. Even your presentation that you did down in Kentset showed with Top Iowa, one and two and Freeborn and Worth. As you went taller, you went back. Right now, you're suggesting thus on a development agreement of fifteen hundred foot setback. That's what you used out in here. Those are four fifty nines. These are five nineties. You're jumping a hundred and thirty-one feet and you want the same setback. And you guys pretty much wrote the developmental agreement. Every time we discussed it, you came with a new, we've had five of them now. The first one said fifteen hundred feet, fifty decibels. The next one added in the flicker and then you and me discussed, there's only two things that we've negotiated. You guys have stuck. We have, we've tried to negotiate with you as far as setback, those going a hundred and thirty-one feet taller out here. And there's only two things that you and me have talked about, and one was the distance from our road. You said you were going a hundred and ten percent from the middle, from the middle of the road. I wanted it from the right away. We got together with the edge of the road and went to a hundred and fifteen. The other one that we got together with was you want an eternity clause on this thing that never zoning for eternity can ever affect this project. I disagree with that. Your project is for twenty-five years and then another twenty-five years. We got together and you put fifty years in there. Someplace along the line, we got to turn it over to somebody down the road for new supervisors. We can't tie their hands up forever because that's what the ordinance did that we got back that twenty eighteen twelve five ordinance that we got rid of. So when you guys come out and say, hey, we have tried to, we haven't negotiated very much. You've set the standard. You know, we've talked about it every time I've met with you for three times we've met, come and go, welcome center. And we and every time, we haven't talked about decibels too much. But we talked about setback and we also talked about shadow flicker. My attitude is if you have the technology to get rid of shadow flicker, when it comes to your participating landowners, if you only want thirty hours a year with them or the maximum thirty minutes a day, I got no problem with that. But when it comes to the landowner that didn't sign up, why should they have to tolerate any shadow flicker? You got the technology to take it out. Why not make use of it? Um.
I got some comments on that or you want to?
You go right ahead because I'm still looking for another.
Okay. So you know, I I certainly respectfully disagree that this has been something that we've negotiated and and just kind of have, you know.
Did Worth County put any input into it?
Absolutely. I mean, your fifty, there's that fifty year sunset agreement in there that you specifically asked for.
But the three big ones.
Okay.
Setback, decibels, shadow flicker. Did we get any input in there?
Yeah, I mean, so we talked, we talked about a lot of different things when whenever we spoke together and and kind of worked through this process. Again, you know, I do want to reiterate that there were a lot of different iterations to this that continued to evolve and continue to add. Add things to the agreement that were, again, additional protections here. Covered under the agreement. One thing that I think is really important is to be able to look at this in in combination with all of those protections. So I don't think it's as simple as simply looking at, okay, this is, you know, X amount of distance from residence. That's the protection, right? When you look at it coupled with a a sound standard as well as a flicker standard, that package of agreement or that package of protections there is on par with, on par or better than, you know, some of the most and and more restrictive ordinances and agreements in the entire state of Iowa. So you look at those things together. And I like to pull back something that I brought in again from from last week is that out of thirty thousand acres that we have signed, when you apply all of the setbacks, either covered under this agreement, the standards and design standards, it gets pushed down into five hundred or so acres of potentially usable footprint, potentially sizable footprint. And so to me, when you look at that and you think, okay, you know, this is an agreement that's supposed to provide those protections. I mean, it takes away all of that area. I mean, I don't know what the percentage of that is, right? But I mean, it essentially constricts us ninety-nine percent of the project area, you know, we we have to abide by these setbacks. A lot of those were negotiated and covered under this agreement. So I I think all of that is very important and just simply kind of looking at a couple of these things that might not be as, you know, a as far of a distance that that you would like when you look at it overall, those benefits are there. And then when you put that on to the unzoned portion of the county that doesn't have any type of protections. You know, you go from zero to fifteen hundred feet, you know, no, no flicker standard to to thirty hours a year. No sound standard to fifty hours a year. That's a lot of additional benefits that is very protective of non-participating landowners. And so that's something that as we started on this process is really what we wanted to do, right? I mean, do something that that addresses all of these, stretch the right balance, but lends itself to the unique situation that worthwhile wind is in. And that's exactly where we're at. And that's exactly where we're at. But I do want to say, you know, one, one other thing here. You know, I mean, fifteen hundred feet or so. From, from previous turbines, it, it's, it's roughly a hundred feet taller or so. I mean, does, just saying, hey, okay, it's roughly a hundred feet taller. If we do fif- a hundred feet more, does that get it across the finish line? You know, I mean, does that change your calculus to, to that great of a degree? Um, you know, if you were to say fifteen hundred to sixteen hundred feet, because the turbines roughly a hundred feet taller. Um, you know. That, you know, does that move the needle at all? But, um, now I'm just kind of trying to see where. You know, what, what that threshold is, right? I mean. I, I don't know, well, you know, that's, that's something we could look at doing, but I mean, just that, that perspective of. I mean, how much more can we actually go and do, right? We've taken our entire footprint and then shrunk it down to try and strike this balance. To try and, and find something that is gonna, gonna be that middle ground. And I mean, show you that, that map. I mean, there's not much more that we can do.
I guess I fall back on the Worth County Comprehensive Development Plan. That's what I fell back on as far as the moratorium. It was signed in oh six. It was done by twelve individuals throughout the county. And it says in here. And it, it's fifty six pages. I didn't print it all off. It covers everything. And matter of fact, we're working on it right now to upgrade it. But it says under industrial development, which is windmills. Encourage and support the development and expansion of the industry within the county. Fantastic. That doesn't cause a nuisance or interfere with existing quality of life for surrounding neighbors and property owners. That's my fight out here in Deer Creek. Even though Brett told me anytime you have economic development, there's a good chance that somebody's gonna lose, right Brett?
Why is that it's gonna have some impact?
It's gonna have some impact.
Increase traffic.
But when people sit in their holes out there and they hear the windmills with the windows shut while they're sitting at the kitchen table and they get woke up at night. I definitely say that's impact.
And that's exactly why we've enacted and started this process. So we can get standards to where that does not happen. And those standards are in the development agreement today. And that's something that you can vote on and be able to deliver to the residents of, of Worth County.
But what good does it do for me to pass a fifteen hundred foot setback? When we got problems out there because of a fifteen hundred foot setback and even down to a thousand eleven hundred feet. If I'm gonna, if I'm gonna pass it for out here. You know, you're a hundred and thirty one feet taller. You've got, you went from a two point megawatt to a four point two megawatt. You've jumped one point four megawatts. I don't know how that affects the sound. I'm sure the taller you go, the longer the blade. But it's been proven in the past that longer blade cutting through the air, going across the turbine tower. Is what causes the noise. Let's face it, Mark, if these things didn't make noise, we'd stick them everywhere. It's good for the county. The tax revenue is great. You come up with a silent windmill, I'm all in. But good luck.
Supervisor, lower. You're absolutely right. Right? We came in on the big three and. Said, these are the standard we want in the agreement. I'm not gonna blow smoke. That's how that went, right? And the reason it went that way is when we do the development agreement, we're trying to give you. As much of what split the difference between no ordinance and the ordinance you want. Consistent with what we can actually do. And the, the simple problem is by that point of the project. We can't redesign to give more than that and not kill the project. It just simply won't be economically feasible. Beyond, beyond those points, right? But I want to talk specifically about the sound because you, you're talking about a, a bigger. So when, when you were talking about the Iowa environmental council report, you're talking about how those historically have been based on smaller turbines. Those, the standards are generally, if you're looking at that list, either fifty or fifty five decimals. So this uses the lower of the, the common figures and. Even if you're right that, and you said, look, you know, I don't know what happens with a bigger tower and a bigger megawatt. Even if you're right, you know, fifty is fifty is fifty, right? So there is this challenge in Palo Alto. The supervisors there had approved the project. One of the objections was, well, this modeling doesn't prove anything. And, and both the supervisors in the court looked at it and said, doesn't matter what, i- i- if the modeling's wrong. The company's gonna have to fix it, right? The standard is fifty. Um, if it's going over fifty. They're gonna have to figure out what they're gonna do about it because that will become the law. That'll be true on the development agreement too, right? So if, you know, if it's harder for us to maintain fifty, then it would have been with one of those four hundred and fifty nine or four hundred and fifty three foot. Uh, one point two megawatt turbines, that's our problem. We still have to meet fifty. And that's a protection again that. You're not gonna have in the undeveloped areas if we're right on vested rights, uh, theory. Yeah, so it's true, fifteen hundred is a number that we came up with. We think it's a fair number. We think it's what, even in the newer counties with the larger turbines, most of those are fifteen hundred, some of them are sixteen hundred. But it's just, the, the fact is where we are at in planning, that's, we wanted to give you as much as we can and that's what we can give.
And then just to build off that just quickly too, I mean. Uh, tho- those post-construction noise analysis that, you know, that we agreed to, and just kind of to touch back on, on something that Jeff pointed out earlier. You, you one hundred percent can take a, uh, a specific turbine type, the. Um, the, the, the sound assumptions for getting a turbine and make projections based on that. Um, you, you absolutely can do it. And above and beyond of that, we're so confident in that that we agree to go in and do. Post-construction analysis to make sure that those are meeting or exceeding those standards. Um, and so, you know, I, I, I think that that's, that's an added layer of protection to make sure that, you know, you have that there. Um, and that, you know, these ideas or these, um, you know, these, these. These scenarios at Deer Creek where folks are saying, you know, they're louder, there's, you know, um. Different perceptions that they're much louder than this fifty decimal threshold. Again, you know, wouldn't happen based on the terms and, and standards here. You know, in, in the development agreement, and that's largely why, why we put it in there. And then lastly too, just, you know, one other comment, but you know, we also went, went above and beyond for all of these things, whether it's. It's sound or flicker or setback, whatever it may be, there is that, that clause that, um, or, or paragraph that we added into the agreement. It says, hey, we're gonna use and look to utilize the least impactful turbine locations to non-participating landowners first. And, you know, we're trying to be as responsible as we possibly can be within those bounds. Of, of striking the right balance, like Brett said, that, that gives all of these protections. Goes as far as we can, which we have, then, and not, you know. Not kill the development, given that it's so, so far along in the process and it's been, been being developed for, for years at this point.
But what it does do, I mean, even if, so I think Mark's August presentation said at present. We don't have a turbine closer than sixteen hundred feet and we. Like to have a little bit of wiggle room just for construction and what you get into in construction. But the point is. It would be enforceable in areas that if we wanted to take, you know, it would be easier for us without it to do twelve hundred feet. That today we could, right? Without, without the new ordinance, without the development agreement. So, you know, it is still a, a meaningful and enforceable protection for the county. And we've tried to give where we can on some of those things. We don't have a lot of room left to give, but most of section five. All kinds of additional development terms, most of the subsections have been in negotiation with the county. I, I provided, Will, I don't know if he provided to you, but, uh, a, a copy that highlighted in yellow, everything we've added since the original agreement. Um, in trying to be responsive to things that, that the county has asked for. And that was before the last couple, right? The sunset where we can't sort of hold turbine locations open indefinitely. Uh, there's now a cap on that and the ability to inspect for compliance at our cost. So, yeah, we, we've continued, um, and, you know. But there has to come a point commercially where we have to know what's gonna happen moving forward, whether that's a vote up or a vote down. We certainly hope it's up, but, um, you know, it, it's not that we are looking to not negotiate with county. We think we've done that, we've done that in good faith, but we do because of the, you know, commercial agreements, because queue positions and time limitations on those. Um, we just sort of have to know where we stand.
Anything else?
Uh, no, you mentioned Palo Alto. Didn't they, didn't they just pass an ordinance and they took a fifteen hundred foot setback with a five hundred fifty foot. Total tower and wind and blade to twenty six forty with a six hundred.
You would probably know better than I would because I haven't been up there since the project I worked on.
Yeah, they went to twenty six forty, Harden went to twenty six forty, a dare went from non-participating people to two thousand, participating eight hundred. So I don't have any problem if you stay at fifteen hundred for the participating people. I don't even care if you go less than that. If it's okay with them, it's okay with me. It's the non-participating people when you stick that thing too close to their house. And that's the discussion we're having on what's, what is the ideal? And it says in the environmental deal that fifteen hundred feet, most people can, most of the windmill people can work with it. But that, I'm still, I'm still sticking with the fact that it isn't. That was not done when these bigger turbines came in. Because when June of twenty eighteen down there, I talked to your land agent and said, where can I go to look at these things? And he said, they're not in the United States. Since then, you got back to me, I still can't find them down in Iowa. But I did find the one in Illinois, Indiana, Ohio, and the two in Texas. There's V one fifties out there with four point twos. But they're also blended in with V one tens with a smaller ones. They've got different ones, you know, they might have forty in the project. They might only have fifteen V one fifties. And that has to be the fact of, they're also setting those things up for how far they're away from residents, right? That's why they go to the smaller ones. We're gonna be closer there. It's gonna make more noise. Let's use a smaller one, but yet it still generates electricity from the project.
And supervisor, what I would say about the people who have gone to twenty six fifty is. I don't know the answer to this, but I, I would ask if anyone has actually built a project.
It does put a damper on the projects. You're right, but it's, but on the other side of the coin, if you've got that much participation. And you have a variance built into it, all you gotta do is do your legwork. I don't know why you don't go to the non-participating people where the windmills are going to be and ask them and say, hey, what do you think? Maybe we can work out a deal here. They get no say in this thing. These acreage owners, it's like when Barb came out to my place. I said, have you been over to talk to the neighbors that own ten acres? Nope, and we're not going there. We can't put a windmill there. I said, don't they have something to say about it? Nope.
So, you know, I do speak with non-participating landowners and neighboring landowners personally.
Well, I've got a whole area up there about three miles that hit me up this week. I went to, they called me up, said, come on over, and it's young people. What we need in this county, some of them didn't, one of them didn't even have kids yet. Another one had two kids, another one had one kids. They're not happy. And that's part of my job as a supervisor, not only for economic development, because I think windmills are fine. But I also need to protect my residents. Those are the citizens of Worth County. They elected me and I'm working for them. Without, without the citizens, you've got no county. So I think there needs to be more work done on this development agreement, but you guys are forcing the vote.
A- a- at this point, we've been so advanced in our development, in our project, and we've been at this for so long. Um, you know, we agree to go in and, and work through the development agreement negotiation in order. Again, to acknowledge that unique aspect that we're in, but also, um. Continue to be able to not hamper the project's progression, given that it is, you know, so far advanced. And so, you know, I do think that again, just those, those protections that, that package that, that is covered in the agreement today. Delivers on, on what we're looking for. And at this point in time. Just like we've kind of described and illustrated that, that we've made so many negoti- or concessions over time. Um, we're, we're looking for clarity on the path ahead that the project's gonna need to go down. Whether it's a, you know, a voluntary development agreement or we're gonna have to go, um, you know, and, and, um. And protect the, the vested rights interest that the project has. We're just looking for, you know, for clarity on that and we, you know, we feel. Feel confident in what we put forward is a really good and workable solution. Um, and.
I understand your vested rights and you've been working on this thing since June of twenty eighteen. You mean, you've got three years in this thing. But the people that live in the county that purchase homes. And the husband and wife or individual has been working and making mortgage payments all these years, don't they have vested rights?
I mean.
I mean, it's, I mean, we can talk vested rights on both sides of the coin.
So Iowa law has only recognized that when it rises to a nuisance. And there has not been a successful nuisance claim, published case against a wind farm yet. Um, you know, it, it could happen.
It could happen.
But, yeah, I think with most of these farms are. Developed in a way, University of Iowa Health Sciences did a study that did not find health effects at. In- including from sound and flicker at the distances that we're talking about here. Um, so unlikely that's gonna be a nuisance. I mean. You know, I, I obviously it's about Harden County, twenty six fifty, Harden County is involved in a lawsuit. That's what we're trying to avoid here and find a better way.
So, yes.
Yes. It's not, maybe, maybe quite the same thing, but we went through a deal back when we put the interstate highway through.
Yeah.
That we didn't necessarily want it to go through our farm. But it's for the public good and it's something that was needed.
Well, it was eminent domain. You didn't have anything to say about it.
That's it, that's just it. If we'd had, if we'd all had equal input, would we have asked to have a wave station put on our farm? I don't think so. Because we have uneven, you know, irregular fence lines, had to deal with it for the last forty years.
And if this was eminent domain, we wouldn't have this discussion right now.
Fifty years, I should say. Well, I'm just saying that there's, there's some give and take here. There's some benefit to the public. Even if it's not exactly what you wanted.
I think it's great to have benefit to the public.
Cast a point of order.
All right, guys.
They have open discussion?
Oh, no, it's not. We're gonna stick to the, to the.
I'm sorry.
Mistake at hand here. It's all right. Understand. Well, everybody wants to speak out, but it's, it's obviously Mark's floor and our floor, so.
And I think we go, I agree. I personally either talked to quite a few that are in the room or I've received emails. Apologize if I didn't respond to them all. It would have been a long weekend. I think you guys all got the same thing.
Long week.
Long week, yeah. And, uh, there's a lot of valid points, like you say, probably both ways and, uh. So, and this is up for discussion and that's what we're doing here. Between, you know, discussions are good, but, uh, I think there's a lot of, a lot of good that can come out of this one point.
Well, I do too.
Like I say, it's, it is up for possible action. You can or cannot take that action. Doesn't have to be, but I do think it's, I think it's imperative that we decide to move forward.
You know what turbines you're putting out there yet?
We, you know, we, we have modeled the project under that, you know, that, that B one fifty type scenario. Um, which makes it for, you know, a safe assumption if we have to, you know, use something that's smaller, we do have the ability to do that. Uh, you know, so we just want to make sure that we're gonna be projecting and, you know, talking about something that is conservative. So that everything that we continue to move forward with, you know, would be either that, you know, or better. Yeah, oh, sorry. Yeah, and, and so, you know, we, we don't make the final determination on the technology until. Project is, is ready to go on, on like the approvals, like we're, we're lined it up to, to get started for. For construction. So we've held off on that process, waiting for clarity here, you know, waiting for a path ahead. With, with the county.
So you're still planning then? You're still in the planning stage?
No, I wouldn't. I, I'd say the, the site's fully designed. I mean, it's, we're, the only thing that's holding the project up is. Is this process.
But you've got turbines out there that you can't get connectivity lines to.
We, we can fully build our project based on the land footprint we have today.
What's that?
What's that? That's one of the two, but I, I'm, I got a few more questions for Mark, so, um, correct me if I'm wrong, because I wasn't at the presentation. I'm not a landlord. Um, Kansas, one, two thousand and eighteen, when this came around, two thousand and nineteen, whatever it was, you had a public meeting down there. Um, the start of your process to get going on this. Were you guys in there, um, talking something to the neighborhood, two thousand foot setbacks when this all came to?
So, um, I joined the company January fourteenth of twenty nineteen and then immediately started working on this project. Um, I know the presentation that you're referring to, uh, I, I obviously didn't get it. I, you, I, you've given me a copy before.
Thank you.
Um, so I, I'm, I'm certainly well aware of it. Um, what I can say is a couple of things. And over, over two years, you know, for the project, that's never been, um, that's never been the case of what we've spoken about. None of the agents that have, uh, represented the project have said, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna use a two thousand foot setback.
So it wasn't in there?
It was in the presentation.
Oh.
That was given, but what we do at the beginning of some of these projects is to just, you know, kind of provide a, you know, an example. So it's trying to, to, to find the right balance of, you know, information that's so early on to give an idea for, you know, what the project may look like and then as things continue to come through. Um, we, you know, we continue to, to hone in on what that's going to look like. Um, so.
So, so it was, it was in there.
Yeah, there's no argument about that.
Okay, that makes, I, I'm real easy with yes or no answers. It's, it's a lot easier for me to comprehend. Sorry, I'm uneducated. Um, so you, you started at two thousand feet. And then when it came to us with the agreement, it's fifteen hundred. Why, why can't you stick to that two thousand feet?
Again, I wouldn't say we started at two thousand feet. Again, it was a, it, it, you know, it's an example of projects like this.
It was in the presentation, which was the beginning of this, correct?
No, I, I wouldn't say that, that presentation was the beginning of the development. No.
Okay. It was the first meeting in Kansas in eighteen.
And I think that that.
It was your marketing campaign to bring all landlords in.
It, it's taken out of context. It's providing, again, just an example for, you know, what, what projects, you know, potentially could look like using various types of turbine technology over time. On that presentation as well, they looked at multiple setback distances for multiple different types of turbines. It's just that for this discussion, it was just looked at, people look at two thousand feet and say, oh, that's where you started. That's not correct.
So you, 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 you offered two thousand feet, you offered fifteen hundred feet, you offered seventeen twenty five, whatever, just depends on the size of turf.
We didn't offer two thousand feet, just to clarify.
It's in that presentation, Mark? Yes or no?
It's in the presentation. Again, it's about an example of a representative type of, you know.
Because to me, I guess, you, you can start here. If, if we build a turbine this size, two thousand feet, we build in this size, fifteen hundred feet. I don't know how it all broke down. But to this day, we still don't know what we're building yet. So how do we know what we can set for setbacks? Why can't we get closer to two thousand feet?
And then you get a variance and you go talk to those people.
Can you read what it says on there?
Yeah, it says top Iowa one with a three hundred and twenty foot total height is ten thirty. Top Iowa two with a three hundred and ninety foot, ninety nine foot total height is twelve forty. In other words, as they're going up, they're going back. It says in Freeborn, proposed twenty twenty, it says a four hundred and fifty three foot total height, well, we now know they're four fifty nines. It says minimum, minimum residential setback of two thousand feet. We use fifteen hundred feet as a minimum. Bingo. Then it says worthwhile, six hundred and seven foot total height, minimum residential setback of two thousand feet.
So that's for a, uh, does the, the bullet points on there, does it have a, I think it says V one sixty there, correct?
Nope.
On the, on the depiction?
Nope. It just shows me the rotor diameter, the hub height and the total height. It does not tell me it's a B one fifty or one ten or whatever. It does top, tell me what size turbine is sitting up on top of there.
Just on, I'm kind of an initial assessment of that as well, that is you, using a turbine that would be larger than the conservative estimate that we've projected, you know, for the project. So, you know, V one fifty.
So you're telling me it's using a five point oh mega watt?
Uh, potentially, yeah. I mean, the turbine that's taller than the one that we would utilize in this project, so.
So how do you, how do we know that you're not, I mean, we sat out there the second time we met. The first time we met, you've always been at five hundred and ninety feet. You said three point oh to three point twos. This is four fifty nine with two point eight. The next time we met, we were the same height with a four point two and there may be some five point oh's in the project. Remember telling me that? The next time we met, we were back to the same height with a four point two. How do we know what you're going to use? And now on the internet, Vesta has just approved a V one sixty four or one sixty seven with a six megawatt and a seven megawatt turbine hub on top of it? These things are getting big. I used to think those things were in the ocean.
So a couple of things, the, the size and output of a turbine, right? The protections described in the development agreement are there regardless of, of the, of the turbine technology, right? So if we use a GE three point four, if we use a different turbine, if we use the, uh, uh, a four point two megawatt turbine, the design standards that we have to, to, to abide by are in the project when it would be locked in under the, the development agreement. Um, the output and characteristics of a given turbine are not tied directly to just, or the size of the turbine is not necessarily tied to the output, right? So I mean, you can have turbines of same or similar size that have incremental increases in output based on efficiencies in design, increases in, um, in, you know, all of the components associated with, I get a turbine. So you can't say like, all right, this one's three point five, this one's four point two. Four point two is going to be louder, taller, and it's going to be more impactful. That's not an accurate blanket statement that you can make. Each one has different characteristics associated with it. What we've done in, in having these locations that are covered under the development agreement is take a conservative estimate to make sure that everything, whether, whether we select a, you know, a, a, any, any tournament, that it's going to either deliver on those design standards or be better. And so we've taken a conservative stance to make sure that, you know, regardless of what that would ultimately be, it's going to be adhered to based on the terms in the development agreement. So those protections are going to be there regardless. And again, it's just not as simple as saying this one's larger or this one has more output, this one's more impactful. That's not the case. And so we've tried to take that out again by one. But in the, in the agreement, having those post-construction analysis, like Brett's mentioned multiple times, allowing for inspection after the project to ensure compliance, to be able to give the folks and residents of Worth County and then y'all here at this table as well, certainty that, you know, hey, maybe that piece of this has not been finalized yet, but those protections are certainly going to be there and we have the ability to go bear it. And that's important.
That's some of the fine print we got negotiated. So would two thousand feet impact this process, this project?
Yes, we can't build the project with a two thousand foot setback. It completely deteriorates our potential sizable area from thirty thousand down to virtually nothing. So we're already in that, you know, five hundred or so acre range. If you do two thousand feet, it completely eliminates the project.
So I, I haven't. Obviously, there's no specifics on measurements. There's nothing, but with the maps I've been given and doing some research through our website, um, it appears six, eight of them that are going to be, um, two thousand feet or less.
I, yeah, I'd have to look and see.
So if those six rate were eliminated, this project is the, the forty, forty or fifty, whatever we're talking would, would not happen if we lost six rate of all.
Yeah. Supervisor Stone, uh, we had asked it for a question of your council, our GIS people to look at that and what they came back to us with was just short of fifty percent of them, uh, would not be buildable at a two thousand foot setback. So I'm not sure where you're getting the eight. Uh, ours was considerably higher than that.
Except I'm not, I went through it all. I just was going through, I'm not saying this is your exact, but. So twenty turbines isn't good enough?
No, yeah, okay, yeah. And, and to your point on, uh, on why can't we just go to the two thousand, you know, one thing that's happened, obviously since twenty eighteen and, and, you know, like Mark, I was involved in the project at that time. I'm not, you know, don't know how that was presented to me to. But most of the studies that I know we've mentioned in correspondence or in Mark's slides in August have been done since then. And as we do those, obviously you get a finer point, you get additional setbacks. And so the cumulative effect of all that now is that if we also add the, the non-participating setbacks two thousand, we lose just under fifty percent of the turbines, according to our internal engineering people.
But we discussed, you want a hundred and sixty five megawatts out of this project, right? You've stuck to that all along. If you use four point twos, it comes out at thirty nine of them. We discussed that, right? Five of them are going in Winnebago, so thirty four windmills are going into this project. And that's what you've got to have to make your project work. You've got in Worth County, you've got fifty sites. You could drop sixteen sites and still make this project work.
So.
Not, is that right or wrong?
Um, po- partially, right? I mean, so, yeah, I, I mean, yeah, with a lot of these things, you know, there's, there's, um, you know, largely that, that is accurate, that we are projecting and what we've showed, shown in those locations for Worth County are all the potential locations where, you know, we're, we're, we're not going to use.
Well, you've got one on there that's not signed up at all.
Yeah.
Because he's a good friend of mine.
We're not going to use, um, all of, you know, all of those locations. So the ultimate number, you know, will be less. The right next, the, the final number of that, you know, yet to be determined. But again, this is something that AJ specifically had asked for when, when you and I looked at the project area, went out to Deer Creek and looked for it is that, hey, can we get something in the agreement that says we want to have, regardless of the final selection and number, that we want to look in and see the, the least impactful turbines utilized first. And that's something that we actually agreed to in the process. So, you know, uh, again, the, the, the Winnebago side of it, you know, we, we haven't necessarily gotten to that yet. We've been so focused on all the, um, all of the things that have happened here in, in Worth County. Um, but we would expect to ultimately utilize a smaller number than we projected, what that final number is. Don't know just right now, but, um, so I, I think your, your response is largely correct. Just with a little nuance in there too.
The, uh, DNR guidelines are recommendations. So I don't know if they're actual laws or just recommendations.
Yes, sir.
Are you guys following those recommendations to a T? Are you running less, more?
Yeah, so on, on the DNR aspect, uh, we've consulted and coordinated with the DNR, um, ever since twenty eighteen. Um, uh, ever since twenty eighteen and have continued to essentially establish the, the guidelines as, as a starting point, as we've continued to refine and study the project overall. Um, so they'll, they, they will comment on state specific statewide, um, you know, recommendations. Then we continue to study the project over multiple years, which we have. Um, we've completed site characterization studies, ABNU studies, eagle flight path monitoring studies uh, over multiple years that then allows us to refine, um, refined setbacks and refined distances based on actual studies in the project area. So we continue to meet, you know, with staff each year, US Fish and Wildlife Service as well, to make sure we're up to date on the most, um, the most recent wind siding guidelines. Um, and at, at, at the recent meetings, we've had no objections, uh, to, to the setback distances and what we've utilized.
Okay. We'll try again. Half, are you following their recommendations? Are you going less than their recommendations? Are you going more than their recommendations?
I, I, it's, it's a mixed bag. It's a mixed bag based on studies that we conducted in this project area.
Okay. So, all right. Any other questions?
I'd like to get a comment. In most of the ordinances I read and I researched quite a few of them, when it comes to conservation lands and eagles and all of this stuff, we vary from a half a mile to a mile as far as setbacks. It just surprises me in the state of Iowa, how the animals and the birds get more setbacks than human beings do. We might be messed up in the state of Iowa.
There, there's a lot of process to follow.
I mean, without the human beings, you've got no state law. Oh, you've got a, you've got a blank area. It just blows my mind how we protect the animals and the birds ahead of the human beings.
Good. Anything else? Will, do you have any comments or concerns or anything?
I do not. I think what I've covered with you guys, um, in our closed session meetings in terms of the law, I think you guys have a good grasp on that. I think the, the ball's in your court, um, uh, to vote after you, what you've heard today.
Okay, thank you. Well, the item on the table is, uh, possible action on a worthwhile wind development agreement. Which would include a road agreement. Rich, road agreement, you've seen it? It's comparable to what we've had before? Okay. I know it's, that's one of our big protections to is making sure the road agreement is proper.
If there's drainage in there too.
Um, so I guess.
At least county infrastructure.
Right.
The rest of it between the landlords and the.
We need to wait for, you know, just a little bit of review on, you know, that aspect of it, you know, that's acceptable as well. Just wanted to put that out there. Make sure folks get a chance to see it, that's the.
On the drainage in the roads. If he needs to take a look at it.
Oh. I guess it is on the table, take possible action. Uh, is there a motion to approve the worthwhile wind development agreement?
I will make that a motion.
Is there a second? Is there a second set motion? We'll take the worthwhile wind development agreement. It's been a fail to lack of a second. There will not be a vote on that. Next on the list, wind ordinance, discussion, possible action. This whole conversation's been a little bit a part of that too. I agree. It may, may need to be some changes. Repowering possibly. Uh, like I said, we don't really want to take away uh, from what people have, so maybe there needs to be a little more discussion on that. Um, I don't know your thoughts around anything else.
Property lines.
Yep.
I'm against property lines.
It needs to be, it needs to be from residents because now you take them, it's but eighty acres. You got three eighties in a row and you got the guy in the middle that wants some wind turbines and then two on the outside don't. Makes that property unusable. So property lines need to be defined if it needs to be from residents, because we are talking about people. Land out there really isn't affected, you're not really affected as a landowner out there if there's a turbine on your neighbor's farm.
If you sit next, which most all the houses do sit next to the road. And I talked to Jeff about this and we've argued about it. If you don't own the land on the other side of the property and you own a hundred and sixty acres, you've got twenty six hundred and forty foot of setback off that road to the end of that eighty back there. Now you're, if a guy in there has an eighty the long way and his house is way down here and you go sixteen hundred feet, you eliminated him. He can't put a windmill out there. But yet on the other side, you're only back twenty two twelve. So on this side, you're back dang near five thousand feet. Over here, you're only back twenty two twelve. Because it's three point seven five of a five ninety. That's what I'm going off with. Cause it's three point seven five of a five ninety, that's what I'm going off with. That needs to get, I don't know. And I, and I, and I agree with you on the fact of when it comes to these windmills in top Iowa, one and two and three. If those farmers down there wanna windmill and put it in the same place. And it gets bigger and it gets powered up bigger, I have no objection to them having it. They get to have that windmill.
And again, it falls under this new ordinance, the way it's written, that doesn't happen.
It hurts them.
That needs to be eliminated totally.
Well, I think there ought to be a setback for the property line, but I think sixteen hundred feet is not the number. Cause it, when you got thirteen twenty across a forty. I mean, it eliminates that guy if he's laying in there. Now, I don't know how it lays out out there. I'm just.
Pretty much the same as it does in every other part of the county.
Yeah, but I mean, you could all, you could have a hundred and sixty that the guy owns and a guy over here owns an eighty in there. I just, I think that we, I think we definitely need a wind ordinance. In Worth County, Iowa, so that not only the landowners know what they can do. The windmill people know what they can do. It lays it out and you don't end up in these problems, but I also think it also has to be reasonable.
Why aren't we writing an ordinance against all businesses in Worth County? Because every business potentially can come to Worth County, it's gonna have some undesirable effect to somebody. So we should be, right, I don't, still have a problem with signaling ultimately, we've got potential. We've got more development coming out of the law from center, hopefully. That's our goals to get that developed out there, no doubt. There's people that are complaining about the lights out there already. They don't like the bright lights, you know, so. Why don't, why don't we slap an ordinance on everything on this county?
Well, I think the reason you have an ordinance is so people know what they, what, what they can do and what the windmill company can do. You say, why are we attacking windmills?
No, I'm saying, why are we just picking one industry? It's not, why are we taking, why are we just picking one industry?
Because as you work more and more remotely from home. I can't see people coming in here and we need new families with their kids that can work remotely from home. And they're not gonna pay fifty, sixty thousand dollars. For an acreage and put three hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollars into a home. If they think there could be a windmill coming out their back door and all you gotta do is drive around Worth County. If this wind farm goes in, which I hope it does, you're gonna take the whole. Two-thirds of the top half of the county and you're gonna just pepper it with windmills.
Peppered in anywhere else, or see, there's eighty-nine where I'm at. And there's forty-some on the other side of the interstate, I think, right now, and then there's even more over towards the bowl.
I think we owe it to people to know where we stand on this. Considering they've got that much money tied up in their homes and their acreages or whatever, even smell landowners.
Again, then why aren't we making this a broader-based ordinance that picks up every industry that can come to Worth County? So that every acreage owner or every landowner can have a complaint and see they slow the process down or. Totally eliminate if they don't like that industry coming to town.
I get what you're saying.
I mean, that's what's happened at Worth County all along. Old Noble wanted to come here. They chased it out. We've been chased, the hog industry's been chased out of Worth County. Probably the cattle industry's been chased out of Worth County. If anybody wanted to expand in the cattle business, it'd be very tough for them to put up a large cattle feeding setup. And, you know, now we're going after wind. And how much, you know, how much can Worth County stand to lose business-wise? That, that could be the man internal even. That could be more development out of welcome sign. We need to be welcoming somewhat with restrictions, which I think we're offered. And that's how we move ahead in Worth County.
So how do you have restrictions if you don't write an ordinance?
You do have a development agreement, just like we did.
So everything's gonna be in a development agreement?
There would be nothing wrong with that. Most, most. Wanted to come, we worked out an agreement with them as far as tax infringement or not technically, we gave them a tax break. To come and we worked on an agreement with them. There were stipulations in there what they had and had not to do. You know, those things can be worked out.
Well, I think.
And I think, you know, by placing a moratorium, you forced that issue maybe a little harder than we had to, and I'm not a moratorium fan, I'm not. I, I don't know, I mean, they would have had to sign a road and, at least a road and drainage agreement at minimum with us. And we could have refused that all along until we got what we wanted. We didn't have to sign that road and drainage agreement. There's nothing forcing us to do that. We can, we can still negotiate those points that you have done. Without creating more layers of government, some people want, a lot of people don't.
It, it's both ways, guys. Some people want, some don't, some do. It, it's.
It's a tough decision.
It is.
Yeah, it is.
And I don't. The thing I see is, is we are, we're ninety-six. In uh square miles of county, number eighty-nine in population, ninety-nine. We're, we're in the lower two percent. Um, four hundred square miles in this county, three hundred wind turbines currently. It's a lot. You break it out, we're, we're pushing one per section. We haven't touched a lot of the county and then you eliminate your cities and, and their zone and stuff like that. So I mean, you're pushing it down, you're, you're pushing one per. Per section. Um, and, and it has been a great benefit. Um. It's allowed us to get things done that maybe wouldn't have been done otherwise, uh their, their tax valuation and their revenue. But at what point, I mean, is enough enough? I don't want to see, like you say, you not use your land for certain things, but. The same breath, there's gotta be some guidelines that just make it feasible for you and your neighbor. And when you talk industry as general, you know, wind turbines, industrial development, anything. We have not seen three hundred industries come into this county. We've seen three hundred industrial turbines come into this county. We still want to bring industry into this county to create jobs. And that's what we're looking at doing with some of the development possibilities that are there. So if a facility would come in. And take up twenty-five acres of a footprint and cre- create thirty-two jobs, I think you bend over completely backwards and try to help that company out. You know, you bring in three hundred individual turbines that create some temporary jobs. And at the end of the day, six, eight, ten, twelve, I don't know what it all is.
About five to six percent.
And it, and it creates a hostile environment between neighbors. Is that the right thing to do? Uh, all I can say, guys, this is, this not the best time to be a supervisor.
It's dividing the county up.
This is not a discussion, I mean, discussion. I'll just ask for a raise of hands. How many people are here are willing to put debt service levy on their property taxes? In order to fund the roads and bridges and things we need to do in this county? No discussion, just to show our hands. You'd be willing to double or triple your taxes?
We have anyway, so.
No, we haven't. It's just a question. I mean, and that's something we have to consider, we have to seriously consider here, you know, and I get what you're saying. But these projects have allowed us to take care of our roads probably better than a lot of counties have. You drive around, we, we all travel throughout the state. We've driven down some pretty crappy roads in other counties. That don't have turbines, that don't have the development that we've got here, even the man terminal area, for example. That's, I, I, I truly think that's an important area to develop.
I do too. I think this and all, there's an important area.
But I do think wind is still a very important, important thing to get developed in this county. It's, it's totally good for the county, it's good for a lot of the landowners out here. Just like Elliot said, it affects them personally. And there's people sitting in this room that it's gonna affect personally. And I understand it affects people personally that don't want the turbines too.
Or they just want them back far enough.
But then again, it's, it's. They're taking the rights away from both people and I have a problem with both of them, either, either one of that, but you know, you're, you're weighing out one over the other and that's tough. It is tough.
In one side, it's financial gain and everything else. On the other side, it ruins their quality of life.
I can't, I can't, I can't agree or disagree with that.
You shouldn't be woke up at night.
You know, I, you know, I, I get woke up by the interstate sometimes, which is three miles away.
I hear the interstate.
It waits a while. So, do we shut that down? Trains enjoy scope. We shut them down from ten until six in the morning. I mean, you know, there's, I. We've lived with noise, unfortunately, Worth County. I mean, there's days the wind is louder than fifty, fifty decibels.
I had a train in my backyard where I live in Lake Mills, Gordy.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Gordy, we don't appreciate it. We don't.
I understand, but. It's good to know you lived in Lake Mills once.
Yes, you did. Anyway, I mean. Like I said, I get people's feeling on this wind and this shadow flicker and all that. I, I get it, I. There's no doubt, everybody knows, I've lived with it for twenty-one, twenty-two years. You know, there are train noises, interstate noises, you know. Me driving a tractor around your acreage at twelve o'clock at night when I'm trying to bust my butt to finish a harvest. You think those people like that? And I, I try to be very conscious of that because I farm around a lot of acreages.
I think people understand that as a. Price you pay for living in the country is agriculture. Not everybody does.
I slightly disagree because we had the discussions on hogs, livestock. Now we're having it on turkeys. You know, I mean, and, and is it, is, when does industrial wind agriculture? Probably not, but yeah, it is part of our community. So, again, and we're, we're discussing a development agreement here right now and.
No.
The ordinance, there's, there's a lot of things that need to be fixed in it. Cause right now, the way it sits, it's, it's just too restrictive. I feel, I mean, those, my points, couple of points that I've gone through and I, I'm not illegal with animals. You do better at it tonight, but I read through this stuff and there's, there's just things that I don't really like. And again, it's, it's up for possible action, so I mean, if.
I think, I think, I think it needs to get tweaked.
That's all right, and that's our, our job, I guess, is. Uh, to tweak it, to make it. Proper, the best we can. I mean, it's not gonna, it's a hundred percent be a benefit for everybody, but.
One other little thing in there, I'll tweet, I need to tweet this responsibility thrown back on the order to the measured building sites or setbacks or something. I think that.
Mean the assessor.
Assessors. Then maybe I read it backwards then.
Either way.
One of the two.
I'm going, it's the auditor that sits in.
It's one of those two.
It clicks on your buildings and.
W the assessor. There's little things in it.
So, the question is, we wanna. Look at this a little more, come to an agreement, um, changes that need to be made. Obviously, it's, it seems to be a general consensus that some changes need to be made.
I think, you know, I'm getting texts and phone calls that says, we think it's great.
Did you answer any, but I called both you guys, you don't bother to call back. Sorry for me, but you don't call back.
I, sorry, sir, if you saw the emails and phone calls and texts, we didn't get.
Oh, hey, I've been there. I've been on another county, but you don't call back.
Did you leave a message? Well, if you left a message for me, I called you back. Don't tell me I didn't. I sat on the phone for an hour and a half with a guy at Silverlake last night. But I called back.
Anyways, is that something we wanna do then?
You know, you, you know my stance on worms as regards, I mean, minimum of that's to be tweaked. I, I even have to tweak some of them if I'd be favored, but that's not the point. You, you know. I obviously feel we should move in that wind owner, you know, with, with wind farm, but. Cause this, this comes after that falling start. And I think we should finish up one dub before we do another. Not saying we can't do something going forward. Look at the different parts of the county that aren't in that. I mean, there's just big sections of this county that don't. Seems to be the northern half that has all the wind, pretty much. That we got a lot of wind blowing across here.
Northern two-thirds.
Northern two-thirds, northern half, however you wanna look at it. So. I definitely wouldn't vote on it.
With regard to the changes to the ordinance, is that something that one of the supervisors is gonna coordinate with the others? Or would you like the zoning commission to meet with each of the supervisors to get their recommended changes?
I think.
And then make a, 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 a updated version.
I think what we could do is. Allow the supervisors to go through and highlight. What you, what we would think should be changed. Um, and then get that back to the zoning commission.
Okay.
And then if, um. An agreement can be made, we can put that in, in, into writing on those, on that ordinance, um. That, I think that'd be the best, that because we all have different thoughts and theories on each thing, and that's why we can just go in and say, okay, this section here, whatever.
Right, yeah, just like it, it, there needs to be a central point at which all the edits are made so that they're consistent throughout.
Sure, and I think, I think we can, we can go through and highlight and rec- give our recommended thoughts on those changes. If we come to that agreement, we can then push it out to you, uh, the, the zoning commission to. Update that for us. And also allow input from the zoning commission on that, since they did work on this, they did present it to us this way. Give their thoughts and feelings on it. Cause obviously there's all those republic hearings both ends. Um, you know, I don't, that's, that's my thought. It's just way it's. It's, it's seen it, everybody's seen it, that's been involved in it since day one. So, I guess that's our homework then. I'll go through, I'll go through and uh work mine out, fill out yours as well and.
I've done some, I mean, the director says it's a lot of legal moments jumbled too.
It is, that's the joys of any piece of paper. So, okay, with that, we'll, we'll uh. Table it till next meeting and just see where we end up. Um, welcome there. Uh, I hope we have any some people service, uh, anything on the homeward board appointment?
I'll get back in touch with her. She picked, what's it been, a couple of weeks since she picked up the application?
Two to three.
Yeah, oh, I had a, my phone exploded this week. I don't know why I didn't get her. Um, I'll get back to her.
Department has discussion? Got anything there?
Mark, can I go to handle town to make our contract there?
Air department heads in the Zoom world. Questions or comments? That will move on to supervisor weekly reports. Anything to say?
Nothing. I was dizzier than ever before, but nothing.
Yeah.
I, yeah, answered a few phone calls and.
I, uh, I sat in on a, the public information officer awareness with Mark. Uh, most of it, I wasn't able to say for all of it, but it's pretty much what's gonna happen is if somebody points a finger at me and I'm the chair, I'm gonna point it to somebody else. That's not a job. But, uh, I think we've got a couple of bodies within our system that are capable of being our public information officer. And it's more of the fact of just speaking. Correctly and not giving out any information you shouldn't be and.
Is that a recommendation? We don't actually talk to the media?
Uh, when it comes to an event that would require that, yeah, I would say we. Go with the nominated person to speak on that, but I mean, if, if the Globes that calls you, ask you questions on crap, you know, whatever, that's, but if we get into an event. A pipeline thing, you know, like before or evacuation in Northwood.
Or announcements.
We wanna make sure we put the proper people in the proper places and with the proper information, so. It's a good thing to know. And then also I sat in with uh. Jackie and Joel, Chelsea, Dan, Mark. Mark Thompson, um, the election security and cybersecurity stuff and. Um, ninety, ninety-nine counties were involved in that. And Joel proved he was the smartest man in the room because they kept picking on him for questions and. To be honest, it appears that Worth County is leaps and bounds ahead of a bunch of other counties when it comes to this. So I know we've gotten dinged a little bit on our, says, uh, security thing, but. I mean, you can probably say it too, Dad, we're, I'd say we're leaps and bounds ahead, we're going in the right direction with, with the recommendations they have, so. After sitting through that and hearing what some of the other counties deal with, I think we're in a really good spot. Um, so that fulfilled the good portion of my, my week.
I just, I think everybody's the same, but I'll apologize if I didn't answer somebody's text. I, I did get phone calls, return the call, maybe, but, you know, like I said, I.
I didn't.
We can all attest that we've been.
I didn't return texts, but I returned all, everybody that left me a message, I called.
At least send them a thank you and I will apologize if I didn't do that. It's not that I didn't read your texts, I read everybody's texts and everybody's emails that I got. Even if they're lengthy, I got them all, so.
Yeah, I read everybody's, and if you left me a message, I called you back.
I, uh, I'll admit I missed a few. I tried to answer most I could, and I did not get back to everybody. I, uh, I'll admit I missed a few. I tried to answer most I could and I did not get back to everybody. So apologies if I didn't call you back either, but. I'd say it was a very busy week with that stuff, so. Uh, anything for agenda other than what we have on there for next week? Nothing new for.
Well, just, you'll have the wind ordinance again.
Yep, that'll stay out there. Good. Jeff, you're department head. We skipped over. You got any questions or comments?
Oh, I, I've been, been in an hour fifteen minute hearing. I. Jackie tried to ask that I stop in and, uh, obviously it's a little, little later in the day than.
Yeah.
Than it was, but apparently there was some, some issue or question that, that the. Council didn't think it was appropriate for them to answer. And so if you had questions, I just wanted to be here to.
No, I think we're okay. We just, I know it's a little bit of a policy of procedure when stuff gets put on the agenda. So. We're sticking to our policies. Pretty much how we're going to do it, so. That's why the policy's there. Okay, nothing else, then I'd take a motion to adjourn. Your second?
Second.
My favorite, I.
I.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Who's the gentleman that was setting where Jeff is now?
Oh, right next to him, you mean?
Well, the guy that said I didn't return his phone.
Hey, AJ.
Yeah, Joel.
Can I go ahead and end the meeting?
Yes, you can. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.